That'll take us to board discussion items. The first board discussion item is Ms. Ayala on the leasing policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I brought this up because I've been contacted by some community organizations and community leaders who, after the change, were kind of caught off guard or didn't fully they couldn't frankly afford what the new proposed cost was in some schools, and so there was concern. And I've been speaking with Wanda Paul and her team, our Chief of Ops, to make sure that I understand our end and the changes that were made before my time on the board in 2018 as well as summer of 2020. So I wanted to just go through some questions about the policy and what caused the changes and what we're looking at in the future and revisions that could be made to maybe make the process more clear, to make sure that we are being fair to nonprofit partners and those who are providing educational services in our facilities, and to make sure that we're also being, you know, just considering in an effective manner that's not case by case everyone's situations and what they offer to the district. Mr. Superintendent, could I speak to Wanda about it?
You can ask your questions. They'll come, the team will come forward.
Great. I didn't know if you wanted to come forward or you want me to just address you from there. What do you prefer? All right, great.
Ms. Bro, you want to comment while Ms. Paul's coming up?
First of all, I want to thank Ms. Ayala because when I also received phone calls and I think I read an article too, I think there are certain unintended consequences of the policy, but I would really prefer, if you would be willing to allow us to bring the conversation back, I'd like to have the policy in front of me to be able to follow because it's, you know, I know you're asking questions, but I may have other questions as well. And I think the intent is fantastic. I agree with you.
Mrs. Whitfield?
I did send that information out to the board members today. So you probably, you know, the way that the week's been going, you probably didn't have an opportunity to look at it today. So, but we can certainly answer the questions.
Mrs. Whitfield?
At this time.
I also would like to thank Ms. Ayala for bringing this up. I think, you know, I've had some concerns that I've expressed to Wanda about our current leasing rates and the expense that's put onto our community providers. And one of the things that I would like to discuss, if we do bring this back in the future, to have a more robust discussion on this, is two pieces. One, I have suggested a sliding scale for nonprofit organizations, which I think could really mitigate some of the issues, depending on who the, you know, the people are. And then also a piece in there about principal kind of decision. So if the principal wants this person, if they think that this organization brings benefit to the school, that that could also be taken into consideration to bringing the costs down. And I think that one of the issues that we have with that is that right now, if a principal does that, it takes funding away from the principal and from the school, and I think we should switch it, and I think the funding should come away from us rather than them because I know this is, this is a big reason why they need leases to happen in their schools is because they want that funding. So that's something I'd love to discuss later as well. So thank you, Ms. Ayala, for bringing this up.
Mrs. McQuinn?
Because it's something I think is important.
I have very recently heard from a couple of principals who don't want to have to make that decision. So I want us to be very careful about that. And, you know, in the not-too-distance past, we've had principals disciplined for making some poor decisions. So I just want to, this requires some very clear direction to what we're saying should be done.
Mrs. Paul?
Ms. Ayala needs to answer her questions first.
If I may?
Good.
Thank you. Okay, so could you, could we talk about the categories of leases, what's known as the matrix, on the documents that go over the leasing policy and what those cover, what they mean, who they encompass?
Of course, it'd be my pleasure.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is Chris Garrison, Director of Planning and Intergovernmental Relations, and this is Joelle Shaw, a manager that of, in the department that primarily deals with leases and other things as assigned. If you may, go ahead and see.
Oh, yes, thank you, Ms. Paul. Appreciate the introduction. So the category A has been the same for a number of years. It did not change in 2018, and that's the commercial organizations, and they are charged approximately twice as much as the nonprofit organizations are, which is category B, nonprofit. Their rate is 50% of the commercial rate. And then category C was a new category that was added in 2018 as a request, as a result of a board request. Some of the veteran board members remember that, that we wanted a provision, now it's actually Section 12 of Policy 7.18, that addresses high-quality organizations that provide much-needed services in schools with the highest need. And so that, that provision was added in there. Previously, we only addressed the behavioral health agreements, which were, you know, a very limited group of service providers, and this expanded that to other groups that have service agreements that provide out-of-school programming for our schools of highest need.
So those are typically community-based organizations?
Correct.
And all of those agreements? Yeah, all of those agreements must come to the board to be approved.
Correct. And then category D is not a lease. It's, it's uses of our school that occur through an interlocal agreement with one of our local governments. We track them in TRIRIGA, which is our leasing system, IBM TRIRIGA, so that we have a way to evaluate how much our schools are getting used and also to compare it against how much our schools are using those local government facilities. And then moving on to category F, which is polling places. Of course, you all know that our schools are heavily used for polling places, and whenever we can, we accommodate that in our school calendar. And then category E is school-based organizations, which are those, those entities that are either value, add that value to our staff or to our students. And then category G is employee-based organizations, and then category H is boys' and girls' scouts activities. And finally, category I was added in 2018 to provide clarity as to charter school uses of our district-operated schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so if I understand correctly, then for every category that you mentioned, for educational purposes, other, let's, let's not talk about commercial and nonprofit, which are A and B, but for every other category that includes educational services or the polling place, fees are waived? Or unless they're used for noneducational purposes, which is then goes into it's either a commercial or nonprofit-based rate based on the agreement? Is that correct?
Right. They're not really, I went to the fees are waived. I mean, that nomenclature may be used here. It's that they're not really considered a lease. In your example, a polling place, there's a polling place agreement that we sign with the supervisor of elections.
Okay. So what can be done with monies received from these leases?
So it's in probably the least restrictive category, the internal fund account, so it's very important that schools use this, this money. They can do everything from field trips for their, for their students, any number of things that really benefit our, our students. So the leasing revenue is a very important component of our school fundraising.
Let me speak to that because I was a principal, so they use it for, like you said, you know, kids need clothes, sometimes teachers, principals buy that stuff, you know, teacher appreciation, anything to do with kids, T-shirts for your senior class, so they use these monies. And I think part of what we were trying to solve for in 18 was that some schools get leased way more than others, and our elementary schools in particular. What we found when I first got here in 16 is that at the end of the lease, sometimes the school was having to take money out of their own coffers to cover the lease being in their building because all of our other consumables, toilet paper, all of the cleaning supplies weren't covered in those leases, so then the schools would then have to take it out of their own budget. So if the lease is done correctly, they have, they generate some revenue, especially the elementary schools because high schools got football games and basketball games, they generate revenues in other entities. So this was a way to try to normalize that because we had too many schools that were having leases and then losing money on the back end.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And what's the division of monies between the district and the schools that are leased? Roughly.
So for, for commercial, it's 80/20, 80% going to the school. Am I correct with that?
Yes, you are.
And with the, with the nonprofit, it's 65% to the school and 35% to the, to the central office.
Okay, great. One, one more. Could you explain the relationship that schools have with the lessies? Because as Ms. McQuinn brought up, there is, it's a complicated process, and they may not want all of that pressure on them to make that decision, but can you just explain what the current relationship is on how those decisions are made at a school site by a facilitator who helps lessies that are interested in renting that space?
Okay, yes. Each school has a designated leasing coordinator. It might be the school treasurer, it might be the school secretary, it might be a teacher that wants to take on the additional work, and they are the ones that go liaison with, with their, with their lessies. The central office provides support for ensuring that they comply with district policy and thereby avoid audit findings. As, as you indicated, there are partnerships and special relationships that develop with long-term lessies.
Just for clarification, are we still requiring that those then be signed off by the regional superintendent, by the region?
Only the fee waivers. If the school wants to waive the fee or if there's a request that the district's portion of the fee be waived, then it goes up through the, the chain of command, either up to Mrs. Paul's level at the Chief Operating Officer or in some cases up to the superintendent level.
Thank you, and I think that's an important distinction because that is, again, where some principals or their designees have tripped up in the past.
Mrs. Whitfield?
How is, how is this rate schedule different or is it different when it comes to after-school programs or summer school programs? Or is it just larger groups of time?
I, well, the after-school programs, I would think, and Mrs. Shaw can, can help correct me, she, she deals more directly than I do, but they tend to use classrooms, which are, you know, fairly reasonable in, in cost. Our latest fee increase was only $3 for the nonprofit level, the first increase that we've had since 2015. So for those, those spaces tend to be very cost-effective, and they're also a win-win for, for the school district. They usually provide enrichment opportunities for our, our students. They're occurring during times when we still have either ambient air remaining from the school day or we have the facilities fully on because the custodians are still present. So those are, those are the win-wins in, in terms of, of leases.
Any, go ahead, Ms. Ayala.
Could you talk about the, so when three nonprofit, six raise, right? $3 increase by nonprofit, $6 increase in commercial leases. So can you talk to me about the cost that the district incurs depending on the usage? So it's a two-hour minimum, so we're talking, you know, utilities, there may be folk. Can you just walk me through examples of what that could look like on our end?
You can use the presentation. So I want to also make the distinction, and I think Mr. Oswald can talk to this, that we have extended learning programs in the schools that are community-based and so forth. So that's an agreement that comes to the board and the board signs for that agreement. So I want to make sure that that is totally separate. They have a vetting process for that, and they work through the principal for that. So the big change, if you're, if I answer your question, if I want to answer your question there, is that previously, leasees could say, I want to use this room for an hour on, at this side of the building, I can use this, and I want to use this other room for two hours, maybe in another location, and this one is at 9 o'clock, this one is at 11 o'clock. So we were charging them for two hours maybe. So what we said is if you're gonna, you know, the new rate structure that was approved by the board, we said that if you're gonna come into our buildings, you need to do it in two-hour blocks. That's number one. So, and that, and that was an input from our maintenance personnel that deal with their HVAC systems, HVAC systems, where they're firing up the whole school for two hours or for an hour here and an hour there, and that's wear and tear on equipment. So what they requested was, can we just do it in two-hour blocks? And that way, we're not firing up the whole entire building. And the other part is to try to put them kind of close to each other in the same location. So hope that answers that piece.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
One last question, and I'm done. Could you just tell us the simplest way that a lessie who is a nonprofit or a community leader or someone who wants to provide a service to us is interested in leasing one of our spaces, the easiest path for them to take to do that?
To start at the location, as we said, we have leasing coordinators in our schools. So if they start at the school as the first step, we're there, central office, to provide whatever support the school requires, but that is the first beginning part of that. And then just trying to identify what exactly do they want to do? What is their program? What's the time requirements and so forth? And then we have a lot of information that's on the Leasing Resource Center that they can also look at to determine, you know, kind of what the rules are and so forth.
Thank you.
Ms. Bro?
Thank you. And if we do have someone, which recently there was, that feels that they're being charged excessively, is there an appeals process or a process whereby they can contact someone in the district for it to be explained to them?
So I guess the question would be, on our end, why is it considered excessively? If you, you know, I've dealt with leasing programs before in the past, and anytime you make a leasing or a change to the rate schedule, nobody likes it. I mean, that's just the reality of it. And so because we did not have the summer of 2020 to kind of phase in the program or phase in this new rate schedule, it's kind of hidden people by surprise. And we probably could have done, I would suggest we could have done a better job of communicating that, but quite honestly, our focus was on whether we were going to open the buildings at all, you know, and stuff. So that's really where we, we tried to focus on. And so I would suggest in the future that we definitely have to do a better job of making sure that our habitual people that rent from us understand if we're making any kind of changes, and...
Thank you. And just as a follow-up, that's what I was going to suggest, is if we do make a change, then to notify everybody who leases from us, you know, have something go out to them so that they know, so that they're informed in advance, because now having the chance to look at the matrix, it seems very fair, but this caught me by surprise as well.
Yeah, Ms. Ayala, Board Member Ayala, we had extensive conversation yesterday and then also this morning, and that was, you know, a great suggestion from her to say that, you know, if we make any changes, not just only on leasing policies, but just that affect our community and so forth, maybe provide better communication. One of the things that Chris is working on with our IT department is to look at all the people that lease from us and making sure that we all communicate with them, and that's something that was worked out with Ms. Ayala this morning. So yes, you know, we, we have some improvement we need to do on that. It's not to, it wasn't intentional to catch people off guard. It was just obviously that, you know, we were worried about our churches, whether we would be able to lease to our churches, to our programs, and so it was a lot on our plate. So I do apologize for any kind of miscommunication, and we definitely will try to do better in the future.
I have one last question. Why do we give the schools 80% for commercial, but we only give them 65% on nonprofits?
I'll tell you, just probably sitting at the table, the one that's been involved in leasing a little bit longer than the other two, is that the real estate director who previously did leasing explained to me that it was because, because the nonprofit rates are so much smaller, you know, they're half the rate of the commercial, in order to sufficiently attempt to recoup some of the expenses, and they use the word intent, attempt deliberately, that it was a higher percentage to accomplish that.
I understand, okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. President?
My question is more from Mr. Burke and probably Chris. So listening to this conversation, I think that last piece speaks to it. Now that, you know, our utility company may be raising our rates, I'm very curious, does this impact leases at some point? Because if, if the board is going to be spending millions of extra dollars in utility bills, we'll be eating that cost. And so it's just, it's just a question for...
I think it's a very good question. I, I think we need to just try to hold steady on the current change, you know, too much change over a short period of time is not good. But in respect to the district making money off these leases, we don't make any money. We barely, you know, we don't even break even in most cases. And so I think just, you know, to answer your question, I was, you know, our rates are going to go up quite a bit over the next three years on the FPL side, and so it's going to impact us, but I don't think it's, at this time, especially with this new rate schedule, to try to pass that cost on to our leasees. Yes, ma'am?
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So I would just request, since we, this has been brought up, that legal take a look at why we give such all these waivers for the girls and boys, boy scouts. I don't know if that's something that originated in whatever that was from the feds that's now changed. I don't know where that came from, but let me just say this. So in all these years, gosh, it's just, it's just so good to see us moving this direction and for the newest board member to, to ask these questions. There was a point in time where the people that sat up here seemed to think that these leases were, you know, like a, you know, like a line item, a, a stream of income as opposed to working with our community partners, right? And so this matrix actually came out of like a whole bunch of conversations that seemed like struggle. So, you know, I, I don't know, before we ever talk about FPNL raising our rates and if we were to start considering make, increasing these rates, I would ask us to do some kind of analysis on the benefit for our children for these programs, right? So I had a city commissioner call me and say, how can we help? What can we do? And I'm going to be talking about bringing in people from the community that have expertise to do things at the schools. So now why then would I want to put any barriers to that, right? And so, you know, I, all, over this time, we as a district have come to understand that it does in fact take a village, right? And that we don't have everything that our young people need in order to have them have this wonderful life that we all dream of for them, and we have to have our community partners. And that's why, you know, you know, we pushed and got this, this, this grace for the nonprofits as compared to the for-profit agencies. But I just, I don't want to see those, see us backsliding because of FPNL or anybody else, right? So, and I also understand the bills have to be paid, right? In my experience, when people come and then they say, well, you know, but the principal won't waive everything, right? And I say, but that's because she has to pay the custodians or he has to pay, nobody ever disagrees about paying the custodians, ever, right? But I just don't want us to, to move to what I would consider to be the wrong direction. So I just want to put that warning light up now. Thank you.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes, and I want to thank Ms. Ayala for bringing this up. I've just enjoyed this conversation because this is really what it's all about, really making a difference for our community, for our children as well as for our schools. But I heard Chris say that the Department of Real Estate actually does a lot of this. So we may need to go back and look at how they formulate the formulas to do what they do as it relates to fees and structures. And I know that you said that, you know, we just kind of did this, but now that it's being brought up and we're talking about it, I'd like, I'd like for you to go back and work with the real estate people and see if there's anything that we need to do different.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you all so much.
Mrs. Andrews, the next item is yours.
Thank you. I know it's getting late, but I really do want us to, to take the time to have this discussion tonight. First of all, I wanted to say that I put BD2 discussion about the executive orders and the emergency policy on because it was important for me, and I think it's important for this board, to share together tonight about all of the calls that we've received over the last few weeks, all of, all of the messages we've received through email from the parents. We heard them again tonight. So I think we really have to talk about some of the issues as it relates to the, to the masks, to the pandemic, and for what we're trying to do for our children. So I put this BD2 down because I didn't want to walk out of this board meeting without really having a discussion with my fellow board members about what your thoughts are as we move forward for the future. So I'm asking the chair, that I've had some time to talk to the general counsel, and maybe she can kind of engage with me a little bit, Mr. Chair, before we have our discussion. So if we can bring her up.
Yeah, today, Mrs. Andrews, today I did speak, I sat with the general counsel, and I asked her, what, what would be the procedure for modifying the policy that we currently have in place that requires the children to wear masks in the schools? Since the policy contains a whole lot of things other than just the COVID stuff, we, it's not simply just revoking the policy and going through that process, it would have to be amended. So I asked the general counsel to be ready this evening to, just when I saw your board discussion item, to give us the options that are available to the board.
Can she come up? I do want to read something before she starts, if you all could hear me for a quick minute. First of all, I'd like to say the governor's executive orders as well as Policy 5.326. We just need to make sure our voices are heard here tonight because we know as board members, it's going to be our decision as we move forward with all of the policies that we have in the school district. One thing the school board does is policy. That's what we're all about, and especially as we go through the COVID. We received the emails from the parents about the facial coverings, the masks, and the goal is to keep every child safe. And we sat here tonight and talked about losing students. I heard you, Mr. Burke, talking about students leaving the school district of Palm Beach County that we can't find, we don't know where they are. A lot of the calls that I had with many of the parents were talking about they were, they may leave the school district because the school board's not responsive and it's not listening to their voice. So I felt like we need to have this conversation tonight and really respond whichever way we can tonight as to where we're going as we move forward. So I want to tell the parents, I do respect their advocacy for their children. They're the best advocates, advocates there are for their children because they're the parents, and we hear them, so that's really important to me. And we've heard the governor, his executive order number 21101, we know that, but the general counsel talked to me in a lot of detail on just yesterday and a few days ago about the protocols of this 5.326 policy for COVID. And as you're saying, Mr. Barbieri, we need her now to kind of let us know. This policy was approved, and I think all of you got it, it was approved back in August 2020 and just revised November 2020. So we, we need to begin to review this policy and have open discussions about the next steps. People are wondering, what am I going to do with my child as it relates to COVID and the masks? And they're very serious about it because you heard all the comments about healthcare, safety, and everything else, but truly about the children getting educated. And we hear the same concerns from the other side for those parents that truly want to keep the mask. So it's a two-way street, but we've got to talk about how we're going to try to move forward for the community, for the parents, for them to understand where we're going. So I think we need to be talking about developing a timeline, requirements of whether masks, making masks optional, making no mask requirements, mask requirements, safety protocols as it relates to the summer as well as the beginning of next school year. And we talked a little bit legal about a policy change, whether we could do an emergency policy change, which could happen quickly when you look at this policy, 5.326, or whether we have to go through the normal process of a policy change. You heard a whole lot about that tonight. You heard a whole lot about that tonight. So we had a lot of policies that we discussed. Getting guidance from our healthcare officials. I mean, we need more of that. I looked on the computer. Seems like we haven't had a health meeting, Dr. Fanoy, with your group since December. I was checking around to see when the last time your health committee had actually worked. Now, you can tell me that you're already meeting, but we need to get some guidance from the health officials. You know, I've been asking every meeting, when can we bring Dr. Alonso back or somebody else back here to help us and guide us? And I also ask about legal liability. If we change what we're doing, where we know COVID is still there, we don't know what's going to happen. We hear that the, the students, the children, it's not as aggressive. You know, it's a low priority, but any one child that gets sick is a priority as far as I'm concerned. So we have to be very careful. But we do have to talk about what we're going to do. And I really don't want to go home one more night, one more day without us talking about how we plan to move forward. And I'd like to open it up now for our general counsel to talk about some of the things she talked to me about as how we look at this policy. We did this policy when we were full-blown in COVID. Right now, we are getting better, but we're not there yet. But we do hear the parents, and I want them to know I do hear them. We hear their voices, and we need to have a little discussion tonight as to what we're going to do.
Mrs. Bernard, before you, before you start, there's a couple, a couple of board members want to speak. So that maybe you'll be able to cover what they.
Sure.
Mrs. McQuinn, then Ms. Brill, and Dr. Robinson.
This is a question for the here and now. I asked Dr. Fanoy earlier in the week, but I'm not going to share his answer. I just want us all to know now the answer. I have several parents, so it cannot be just District 1, who are saying right now that their children are in, and I'm going to use elementary and middle school. I haven't heard it from a high school. That their children are outside at recess and/or PE who are still masking. I thought that we had a, I forgot the word I want now, but mask-free time when our children are outside. I can't tell you how many emails I've gotten today, just about that one issue. So if we can get some direction on that for all of our schools, and now I'm saying now, this is, I don't, this is not a principal decision.
No, and I, and I would just thank you for bringing this up. So the board and staff are very clear months ago that outside physical activity, they did not have to wear masks. So that is in writing. And so what I would suggest for any family where that occurs, they need to contact their principal and let them know. Because the board and, and my team have already instructed people that outside masks were not required, and they can take them off at any time.
Ms. McQuinn, are you finished? Ms. Brill.
Thank you, Mrs. McQuinn, because that's exactly what I was going to bring up. And Dr. Fanoy knows, I brought this up to him also this week about students, children wearing masks outside. It is really brutal outside. And, and I understand that, Dr. Fanoy, that you say that they can go to their principal, but I'm looking at this policy that we were just given, 5.326. And it clearly states facial coverings will not need, will not need to be worn after seated when eating or drinking as outlined in the district protocols that will be posted to the district website. I skimmed over the policy. I don't see us mentioning in here that they don't have to wear those masks outside. So I think at the very least, we should be able to do an emergency change because I don't want children in 90-degree heat running around outside with masks on their face. So I think that that would meet the requirements that, that Ms. Bernard has given us. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Legal. But according to what you provided us with, it would have to have an emergency, a health effect. There's definitely a health effect to still, students running around with masks on in 90-plus degrees.
Let me read the, the language of what we've already submitted. Scoping sequence of physical education classes have been adjusted so that the standards for the first month do not require strenuous physical activity. Since students will be sitting in class. Oh, I'm reading the, the documents that we created for the schools that clearly outlines the physical activity.
But that's not our policy, right?
Oh, yeah, no, no. I'm just telling what our practice is. Oh, okay, okay. Well, I just, I just want the public to know that we have been clear that they are not, they do not have to wear masks outside.
Well, just as a follow-up, I think that we have, since we are policymakers, we can tweak, I think we should be able to change the policy, the emergency policy, right? To match the practice. Because this policy really is, it does not support what Dr. Fanoy's reading, which is what the, the practice is.
Before you weigh in on that, I know you're going to weigh in on that. Dr. Robinson was next, and then Mrs. Whitfield.
Thank you. So, yes, this is a wonderful, wonderful place to be, right? To have the nerve to talk about whether or not we need masks, right? So, so let me just talk a little bit about risk reduction. So, a year ago, well, I guess not quite, in September, we put in layered precautions as I think were very appropriate, right? I do agree that there are, there's truly a downside for children having recess outside with masks on. But I really think that we need to ask, well, as Ms. Andrews asked, that we have Dr. Alonso come to us. We need to ask Dr. Alonso, and we need to ask the Health Advisory Committee to weigh in. I mean, knowing the, the relative decrease infectivity in children, the relative decreased severity in children, and the fact that they'll be outside makes me a little more comfortable that we could, you know, of, like, just actually say, don't wear your mask outside during recess. I could tell you, I was telling my grandchildren to wear their mask outside at recess. But I also understand that I have a, a biased view of, of this whole thing, right? So, you know, trust and believe when you guys are getting those 11:00 PM emails from me. I'm also reading all the latest stuff about COVID, right? And so what is not out there, what is not out there is when we start relaxing, right? There were metrics for reopening school, which by the way, we didn't follow, but, okay. But there are no metrics based on any research for when you can start going inside, you know, classrooms with no mask and, and feel comfortable, right? That everything, that everybody will, will remain well. I'm, you know, concerned that come August, we're going to have more children coming back to school. I know Mike Burks wants, wants all of them to come back to school. I, you know, that's still causing me a little anxiety because, but I, I think we have to search for, and I've been searching for it, I haven't found it, some guidance on the removal of masks. And so to go back to the Commissioner of Education's suggestion that we make masks voluntary in the fall, it's just too early for us to make that call. But we have to find, well, okay, I'm, I'm repeating myself. I just keep looking for the, the science that would make me know that we were doing something safe, you know, down the road. And it is just not out there yet. But, okay, I, you know, but I, I don't know. This thing just causes me way more anxiety, I think, than it causes you guys because I know what inflammation does in the body, right? And, and just saying that there's a low risk of death. Well, first off, if, if it's your kid, that's 100%. That's what I used to always tell my patients. Well, you know, the risk of so-and-so is, you know, 70% or whatever, but if it's you, it's 100%, right? And so, and then if, I just don't want to make a decision that I know could harm someone. And, and in this case, it could harm people other than the ones who are not wearing the mask. That's the troublesome part. If I decided not to wear my mask and I'm only risking myself and not potentially somebody else, then that's my call, right? But in this case, it, it could harm someone else. And then the other thing in our close is, you know, Dr. Alonso was reporting, and the statistics show an increasing, it's, it's not big, but it, a trend of increasing cases in children, right? Which is troublesome because even if you have a mild case, then, you know, your CAT scan would show inflammation in your lungs. And what does inflammation do? It leads to scars. And so, you know, potentially people who have mild cases, you know, could have significant emphysema in 20 years. So it's, you know, I, so I know I'm rambling, but I just want you to know that I, I really do want to remove the mask. I want, but I want us to be at a place where we can do so safely, and we're just not there yet. So.
Mrs. Whitfield.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a, a couple of quick comments about this. First of all, I, many of you know I had, I went to school for public health, so I believe a lot in public health. It is, it is absolutely my passion. It's actually why I do this job because I think we have the ability to impact the lives of people around us. I think I'm the only person at this dais who's actually had COVID. I got it last April, and it was awful. I was very, very sick. And I actually got the vaccine as soon as I humanly could because, not because I didn't know how it would impact me, but because I knew it could impact someone else, that I could carry a vaccine to someone else, or I could carry a disease to someone else. So my husband and I have both got the vaccine. As soon as they approve it for 12 and up, my daughter's going to get it because I believe in protecting the community. This is the part that concerns me the most about this is that there's a lot of people in our community who don't want to get the vaccine. And they're not doing it because they can't get it, and they're not doing it because, because it's going to cause them some sort of illness or adverse reaction. They just don't feel like it. And to me, the vaccine is about your neighbor. It's about your family. It's about people who maybe couldn't get it. And it is about the children in your lives who haven't been approved for the vaccine yet. So this, this mask issue, I completely understand. I don't want to wear masks anymore. I don't want to send my child wearing masks. I would like us to consider opening the playgrounds again because as a part of my, my public health world, these kids need places to exercise and be outside. So I would like to consider that as much as possible. But I want to make sure that this community is protected because I see my job here as taking care of everyone in this community. That is, that is why I do this job. And so I've, I've talked to a lot of friends who don't believe in masks, don't think that they're doing anything. But I tell you right now that I held my infant daughter when I had COVID, and I wore a mask, and I didn't give it to her. And I didn't give it to anybody else in that NICU. And so to me, they work. I, I believe in them, and I believe in public health measures. So I just want you to know that if you're listening to this public, and I know you are, I'm just here to encourage you. I want to move forward with this as much as anyone, but I want to encourage you to please get the vaccine so that Palm Beach County can move forward out of this. I don't want to do this anymore either. So I'm, I'm ready to move forward with our discussion. I want to do it with science on our side. I want to make sure the community feels heard. I am reading your emails that are coming forward. But I believe in the science, and I believe in, in public health, and I believe in taking care of your neighbor. So please, please, please consider, if you can get the vaccine, help us so that we can get to a place where we can take the masks off our kids because I don't like it on them either. Thanks so much.
Sean, Ms. Bernard, I know, I know you're going to respond to some of these questions, but my understanding of this policy is that, and I remember there's a catch-all, and I just saw it. It's on paragraph seven. So the superintendent can, can suspend, revoke, or rescind portions of this policy based on updates, available information from the CDC, state, or local authorities. So in reality, he can suspend the, the recess issue, right? I mean, he can tell the principals, I'm, I'm modifying the policy. He's got the authority, so he can say, no more masks on playgrounds for any children in the district, right? He can do that.
Correct.
So if we need to amend the policy, then tell us how we would go about doing that. Can it be done as Mrs. Andrews suggested, as an emergency situation? Or do we have to go through the, the, the whole process of, you know, development and all that before we can modify the policy?
Well, it depends. If the superintendent is using the authority that is, that is outlined in the policy, that just requires the superintendent to issue a bulletin to that effect. So there isn't a, a long process for that piece. I want to make clear to the board, because there were some things that I heard that I, I wanted to make sure were clarified with the board. And that is that policy 5.326 is not an emergency policy. I want to make sure that the board understands that. I, I know and understand that it began, when we started this process, if you remember, it began as an emergency policy, but that expired after 90 days. And then the board went through the rulemaking process of making it a permanent policy. So what we are dealing with is a permanent policy. But there is a caveat in the policy that you mentioned, Mr. Barbieri, where the superintendent can make a change. Now, if the board, you know, wanted to have a change in its permanent policy, of course, upon the superintendent's recommendation for a permanent policy, we would have to go through the, the rulemaking process, meaning it would have to go through development. You could, you're not required to have a workshop before development. That's optional unless the public requests a workshop. But you would have to go through development and then go through the adoption process. And as we know, that takes some time. We looked at the schedule, and of course, I'd want to confirm with Ms. Bass. But I think if we went through the rulemaking process, we might be able, and we'd have to start now, obviously, but we might be able to get an adoption possibly by July, late July, early August, I believe, after, when I've looked at this previously. Now, there was a question about whether or not, assuming the, the superintendent did not want to use his authority, his authority to, to make changes, if we could do an emergency policy. And, and so to that, I would say it would not be the recommendation of the general counsel to, to do an emergency policy. And I know, Ms. Brill, you mentioned that it, it might constitute, you know, or it might qualify under the standard for an immediate danger or health or safety issue. When we looked at that, perhaps if you're talking specifically about, you know, being outside, perhaps. But I, I caution you about making some sort of general blanket, you know, optional requirement for masks because as we know, children are not always outside. And so that's where I would worry if we did some sort of emergency policy that just had a blanket optional usage of the mask. But you, we probably could make an argument, particularly if, you know, we probably want to make sure the language is solid because that standard is very strict. It, I mean, it's an immediate danger to the public health, safety, or welfare. Many would argue that, you know, not, removal of the mask is the opposite of that. And so I think once you include the fact that, you know, that the child is outside, it's 90, you know, whatever degrees weather, we might be able to make an argument in that limited circumstance under an emergency policy.
Ms. Brill and Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. So, and as you were speaking, and I was just thinking, this is to the superintendent, since we do have the procedures for the schools. If the superintendent was willing, I know he was going to recommunicate it because there's been some misunderstanding. But if we all have agreement that we don't think the children should be wearing their masks outside in recess and on the playground, if we all agree, if the superintendent would be willing to send out a communication to the families, just saying that, you know, masks are not required when the children are outside. This way, it's not only the schools, but the, I think that would appease a lot of the families that are concerned about the children being out there. And, you know, clearly, if, if somebody wanted their child to wear a mask out there, they could. I'm just worried about dehydration, the heat. We are going to have extended time now for the children to catch up academically. We have camps that are going to be there. So I don't think it takes a policy change per se if the superintendent was willing to just put out a communication, which I think would ease people's minds and get us, that would be the. which I think would ease people's minds and get us, that would be the first step.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, all I'll be doing is reiterating what we've already stated.
Right.
I'm sorry. So, yeah, I'd be glad to do that.
But families don't know it, that's the problem. And so, I think that, you know, we have to give ourselves a little PR, too. And by putting that out in a communication, that's a positive communication that we are listening, and I think it's the first step.
Dr. Robinson, then Mrs. McQuinn, then Mrs. Andrews.
Okay, thank you. So, yes, I agree about the communication to the, reiterating with the schools, and also to the parents that masks are optional during outside recess, right? 'Cause if, you know, if I'm gonna remain very paranoid and my grandchildren are gonna wear their mask outside for recess, they should be able to, so. Now, but the other question I had is about the playgrounds. So, what's the direction on the playgrounds? 'Cause it sounds like some are open and some are not.
Yeah, we, as a team, literally talked about that on Monday. I think Mike Burke's team and Wanda's team have done an analysis, and so, we're gonna finalize those decisions about opening up the playgrounds for the summer. We just haven't finalized it, but they brought the information to me on Monday, and we'll finalize it by the end of the week.
Okay.
Mrs. McQuinn.
Going to what Dr. Robinson just said, there were two different issues. One is outside, outside at recess or PE. We had a PE teacher in District One who was having students six feet apart, wearing the masks, just walking the track. Principal did stop that. But playgrounds are not open, is, is my understanding. And several of the parents are saying, "Please open our playgrounds." So, don't confuse PE recess with playgrounds.
Mrs. Andrews, then Mrs. Whitfield.
And we need the playgrounds open. Why can't we open the playgrounds? Did he say we're gonna open them now? Did you say that? I just wanna make sure I heard it.
He said for the summer.
I said for, we, the information was just brought to me about the analysis. So, we'll make a decision on when, but they, we will definitely have them open this summer. I haven't made a decision whether I'm gonna open them right now.
Well, I would like for you to consider that, because this is one, I mean, we can't do everything, Dr. Fanoa. I had been asking you about the, the Health Committee, and I looked on the computer, I was pretty disgusted when I saw that the Health Committee had not met since December. And I keep asking at every meeting, "We're saying we're following the science." Well, I'm reading on my own. Dr. Robinson, you are a doctor, so you, you have a lot more knowledge. But I'm reading in the Palm Beach Post, I'm looking and calling other districts, and trying to find as much information as I can, listening to Dr. Fauci, all these people. But we need a Health Committee, and we need Dr. Alonso here with us to help us get here. As I called around just recently about the other school boards across the state, they're looking at trying to get themselves together. They haven't made a decision as to whether to remove the mask yet, because the governor just put this out, and most of them have policies as we have policies. So, it takes, it takes some time to get through the policy level. But they're beginning to discuss this stuff. So, we're talking about, we're, we're looking at the health metrics and the pieces here. I think as a board, we need to be talking about that publicly. I, I, I'm not interested in just talking to my friends, or my husband, or people in the community. As a board collective group, I can't do anything by myself. But I am concerned about every kid, and making sure that they are going to be safe, and that we are having the information given to us so that we can make the best decisions possible to get these masks off their face. Now, we've been sitting in here since 2:00 today, and we know how cumbersome this is, and how dirty it is, and the germs. Can you imagine the children all day? They've been doing this since last year, last year. This is when we put this policy together. So, I understand the scared, the scaredness of the parents in the sense of their children being harmed because of the germs and checking the temperature when they get off the bus after they've worn these masks all day. I understand where they're coming from. I understand the parents who have children with underlying issues. We're talking about ESC children and ELL children who can't even come into the school, because guess what? They can't wear a mask. And so, I'm looking at all of the, the pieces. So, we need to be real sure that we're getting the medical information that we need, because we, we're gonna have to make a decision more sooner than later. And so, we've got to make sure that we get the information from our healthcare experts. And so, Dr. Fanoa, is your, do you have a team? Do you have a healthcare team that can come back to get with us?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I talk to them regularly, they're, we have them scheduled to come. So, yeah, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, okay, because we need it, we need it immediately. And I need parents to know that we're trying to get the health information so we can move forward. And so, we've got to, we've got to get something done. I don't wanna lose any more children. I don't want anybody to die or get sick. But I really do wanna get them back to school and to get these masks off as quickly as possible.
Mrs. Whitfield.
I just wanted to say, I think we can open the playgrounds. I think what we could do is we could just have the kids line up and sanitize their hands. The issue is that they touched the playground where another kid touched. If you sanitize their hands when they came off before they touched their eyes, nose, or mouth, I think they would be fine. It's, I'm not a doctor, but, you know, from my understanding of, of disease transmission, I feel like we could do that and sanitize them as they come back into the classroom, and, and they would be okay. So, I think it might be a way for us to move forward and move on from some of this right now. And knowing the importance in balancing the mental health issues and the need for activity, kids need exercise so badly, and they need to be out there. So, I think, I would, I would love it if you would consider it as well, at least as a first step.
Dr. Fanoa, I, I agree with Mrs. Whitfield. I mean, if we're letting, letting the kids go outside and play together during, during recess, then, for goodness sake, open up the playgrounds and let the kids play the rest of the school year. Let them play outside, you know? It's like they've been cooped up now for months and months. We're letting them go outside without masks on, they're playing together, they're touching each other, playing tag and whatever, touching each other. So, what's the difference if they're playing on a swing? They're swinging instead of, you know, just open up the playgrounds at the schools and let the kids play, you know? It's like, they're outside without masks on anyway, let them play on the playgrounds. Dr. Robinson, you were next.
Thank you. So, yeah, I'll agree with both of you, but I want to add, like, some context, because, so what, what is clear now is that the transmission of this virus by touching something contaminated and then taking it to your face is much less than was originally thought, right? And so, like, I'm actually much more comfortable with opening the playgrounds and playing on the playground than I am with taking off the mask outside, 'cause it's airborne. But I'm good, I'm actually good with both. You know, I think that we can, and, you know, you ask whoever you need to ask. But I'm, I'm comfortable with opening the playgrounds and with having the mask be optional for outdoor recess or PE, right? So, I'm, I'm good with that. But, but I just wanted to add that context, because we all talk about how we feel, and I wanna talk about disease transmission, so, thank you.
Dr. Fanoa, will you agree to that? I mean, it's, we can't make you do it, but you have the authority under the policy.
No, no, seriously, we, we made the decision on Monday, so we, we have all the evidence. It was just, we needed to get through Wednesday to see how you guys feel about stuff. But team is ready to go, Mike, Mike's team presented everything, so we'll, we'll circle back, and we'll make, we'll get the communication out this week. Say it again.
I said, let them party outside on Friday.
Oh, Mrs. Andrews, go ahead.
I like this discussion. I think we did well tonight, I really do. And I like this discussion, because we are the ones that are accountable as the board, and the parents are suffering, the children are suffering. And I'm waiting to see that healthcare committee, I'm waiting to see them, and I'm not playing, because I'm telling parents, "We're, we're watching the science, we're working with our healthcare officials, and we're gonna get back with them with some information." So, you know, one of the things, Mr. Barbieri, I think we need to put this on our agenda to be talking about this. I mean, we may not have an answer to anything, but I, I almost see us having a standing conversation about where we are as we move forward to opening the schools up, as to what we're doing, whether it's gonna be masks, mask optional, or no mask. And where are we with the science and the health? Every time we see each other, we should have those conversations, because every day that we don't have those conversations, it's the day that people are saying that we're not taking them, their kids, serious. So, I, I like that idea, if anybody would go along with me.
I agree with you, Mrs. Andrews. I, I think we need, we need to, we, we need to make some, have some discussions on what we're gonna do with these masks. And, and we do need Dr. Alonso here and the Superintendent's Committee to tell him, so that at some point, we can tell the parents, "Yes, starting in August, the kids are not gonna wear masks in the schools unless they wanna wear masks." I mean, we need to get there. These parents, you know, a lot of them feel, you know, differently than, than some of us. And it's enough. I mean, we're getting hundreds and hundreds of emails from parents that want to take the mask off their kids. So, at least we have to give them some hope that this board is actually listening to them and considering when that can happen, rather than just keep saying, "We're not making a decision yet, we're not making a decision yet." I mean, we get, we gotta have some discussions on it, so the parents know that we are looking at this and, and making a decision at some point soon, what we're gonna be doing, you know, whether it's, we, we make it optional starting at the beginning of the school year, based on whatever the situation is with COVID at that time, so that at least we have, they, they have some finality, and as much as we can give them as to what, what's gonna be expected of their children at the end of the summer when they come back here. Dr. Robinson, I believe your hand was up next.
Yeah, thank you. So, again, I keep looking for some, some research on, on just some metrics that would help guide that. And so, my request is, Dr. Fanoa, if you can, I don't know who the person would be, but have somebody call some of the, like, the medical, medical schools and the Departments of Epidemiology, and ask them if they are aware of any research being done or in progress, or any kind of guidance they can give us. Because we know, well, I know, the six-foot social distancing will be out in August, right? And so, what we're talking about is, like, full-scale back-in-school, like, business as usual. Like, I don't know, I don't know what the magic number is to feel comfortable. We know we're not, we're not gonna be zero. I don't know if we're ever going to be zero, right? But I would like to have some kind of guidance, right? I don't know if anybody's been, for example, monitoring different countries, and, and a lot of their experiences are all over the place. So, you all almost have to go, like, district by district in various countries to see what they did. Some of the reports that were coming out early on about the different experiences in different countries were painting this overall blanket, when in actuality, if you went into the details, which was essentially like county by county or district by district, different things were happening. And so, the question is, if any of these epidemiologists are digging into that, they could give us some information that can help guide us in this decision-making. That's, so that's my request.
Ms. Brill.
Thank you. So, I, just to summarize where I believe we are, we're going to have communication go out, that the children don't have, it's optional to wear their masks during PE and recess, and that we're going to open up the playgrounds, right? And then, hopefully, Dr. Fanoa, we can have at the next meeting a healthcare professional, Dr. Alonso or someone else, come to us, and we can have an item on the agenda to start to talk about, even though it's still premature, what direction we're moving in. Because there are parents that have spoken to me who have clearly stated their children will not attend Palm Beach County schools if their masks are not optional, and they need to make their placements for their children, like, now, if their children are gonna be starting somewhere else in August. So, I just wanna be fair to the families that are out there. So, if we could have someone here and continue the conversation so that we know where we're going.
Mrs. McQuinn.
And just a tiny bit of clarification that some schools are going to want. I already, I got a text. So, many, and this is particularly at the elementary, well, it's only at the elementary level, but many teachers like to reward their classes if we have been really compliant, that we're just gonna go outside in this little area, and we're going to chat and breathe. Look at the clouds, and I'm really being serious about this. So, can we make it clear, if they're outside, it may not be the fine arts PE teacher? If they're outside, and clearly they're supervised by someone, they don't have to wear a mask.
This is, this is what I'll commit to do right now, since y'all have me on the spot. Let me get communications and academic team together to come up with some language, and we'll get it all wrapped up this week.
Okay, progress. Dr. Robinson, you gonna end that progress?
I have my hand up, just to, just to make the statement that the concept of going outside and breathing and looking at the clouds and stuff is safer than recess. Okay.
Okay. Yep, agreed, agreed. All right, there's no further discussion? Good. We need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, taken by Ms. Ayala, all in favor, opposed. Motion carries, 7-0.